Okay, I would like to call the meeting to order. We're gonna have a short budget session and then we'll get into business. So if everybody could please rise.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I appreciate the people who came and are in the lobby and I apologize for having to do this. Couple of budget items. The first item on the budget is the slider tank proposal and that's our water tank. It's the one that is up by Veterans Park. And the first phase of that is to do the study in the specs, which is $120,000, which is what we would be authorizing tonight. And then the money in the budget is, to tear it down, brings the total up to 640.
Yeah, it's been in the budget all along.
Right, it's in the budget. So I would entertain a motion to accept Buckheart Horn's proposal of $120,000 for the specs for the slider tank.
I make the motion to accept the slider tank proposal.
Inga, seconded. Do we have any discussion on the proposal? We talked about it a little bit last meeting. Okay, without any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My vote is aye. Okay, the next thing on the budget list is a mowing proposal. We went out for mowing this year and we actually asked three bidders to bid and we only got one that Brian Almany turned it down and I can't remember.
J and D or J and J?
J and J. Yeah, and Brandon Jordan bid it. He came in at 1375 per cut and the borough's cost to do that is 1571. So we have a savings, including the insurance and the cost for two new mowers based on a four-year replacement. We saved about $6,500 on this and what we wanted to do was take this money for the borough employees and put it into stormwater management. So that was the purpose of the mowing, the mowing quote. We're still gonna do some mowing, we'll still do some trimming, but the bulk of it is gonna be done as a subcontract. Does anyone have any questions about that?
No, I mean manpower-wise, we're down from where we would've been anyways.
Right, we're down one person right now. Okay, I would entertain a motion then to accept this bid since it's the only one we received.
And this is just, this is for next, next year.
Right. Yeah, and it would be a one-year. It's a per-cut bid though, so obviously if, you know, if we have a dry season where we don't need as much or, yeah.
The only thing I'd say is like, and I assume he's gonna do that, is he's gonna provide certificate of insurance liability.
Yes, yeah, he has, he's fully insured, you know, we specked out the bid, so.
I move that we accept the Jordan Lawn Care and Landscaping bid for long run.
At 1375 per cut.
Second.
Inga, seconded. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. My vote is also aye.
And not that it has anything to do with the motion per se, but I guess the borough, the borough, will the borough determine, like down here, somebody determine when the grass needs to be mowed? It's not up to the contractor.
No.
It's up to us to say. Let's say we got a real wet summer or something, it's growing like weeds.
Did you have a question?
Turn on the micro, we can hear you, but the other microphones are off.
Oh, the other microphones, okay. Yeah, it's a little, yeah, yeah, you have to kind of direct your voice towards it, I guess. Sorry. Okay. That's the only budget items we have. Again, those were in the budget. One is actually a net decrease, so we're okay with that. The budget's been advertised for a sufficient amount of time and we're now ready to adopt the budget. Okay, right. And from our budget, the total revenue is $6,853,943 with expenses of $6,828,426. Difference is $25,500 and I believe it's a very good budget for next year. I would entertain a motion to accept the budget that's been advertised.
Oh, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any questions? My vote is aye. And that completes the budget section. Okay, the next item that I have, it's the President's Report and the first item on that is the Police Commission budget. So did you, you said that Chief wanted to say some words to us. Yeah, Chief. Chief?
Yeah, where would you like me to be, right here?
Yep, right there, you can turn that mic on, just flip it up.
How's that, can you hear me okay? Okay, my on? Okay, I understand that there are several aspects of the police budget that are gonna be talked about tonight and through talking with different people, I think there's a few either misconceptions or misunderstandings and I'm just here to clarify a few things before you make any definite decisions, to try to answer some questions and get some things a little more clear for people. There are two aspects for the police budget. One is the total budget, including operating expenditures, which only went up 2.49%. So as far as voting on the cost of the overall operational budget of the police department, that's one decision. The second one boils down to the percentage each municipality of that budget will pay. And as you know, a couple of years ago, we had the consultant come in and we switched over to the PPU system. And the PPU system was based upon the number of incidents each municipality had. And there's a set formula that was put out by the PA Chiefs of Police that uses those incidents and a time factor and it comes up with an idea of how much each municipality should pay by their usage. And we had a formula for that. Now, that formula is fine if you get to a certain point where you have full-time staffing, meaning enough people to cover 24/7, seven days a week with enough people to do the job that has to be done. We are right on that borderline of that staffing. So if we didn't take staffing into consideration, the minimum PPU's that the formula would suggest would put us low on manpower. We wouldn't have enough people to really do the job if it was just based on incidents. So initially, when Mr. Smeele gave his presentation, every year, the sergeants and I would take the number of incidents, use the PPU formula and make a recommendation to each municipality on how many PPU's they needed bare minimum to take care of business. And that was based on average of a year or two prior on what your incidents were. And we did that. And there was a minimum that you had to pay to stay in and if you wanted to buy more time, you could. Unfortunately, with that formula, the minimum came in below what we felt was a minimum staffing formula. So what we did, we added what we thought a minimum staffing was. Municipalities agreed to that, how many officers we needed, to have two officers on at a time, 24/7, criminal investigation, the SROs and all that kind of thing. So there's two different PPU numbers. The first number we come up with is the PPU based on just incidents and we give a minimum. Then we take what the minimum staffing is and have to up that to cover the cost of the minimum staffing. So here's an example, I know Glen Rock is gonna be the one that gets brought up. This year, we took our incidents, did the PPU formula and Glen Rock came up that their minimum PPU should be 6.54 PPU's. They agreed to pay 7.71 PPU's. And their cost would be $298,000. Now, when we figured the PPU's under minimum staffing, that raised the required, requested PPU's to 8.19, which put Glen Rock up around $320,000. They felt financially that was more than they could bear to meet that standard, but they were paying more than the PPU minimum under the original item, item, under the incident setting. So what happens? Well, if you go by the standard of minimum staffing, which the commission had agreed to, you come up with a slight shortfall of just under $20,000. That would need to be made up to bring the staffing to minimum standards. Now, Glen Rock is paying almost $300,000 for their incidents. They're a little short to come up to the standard on the staffing. So what could happen is the other municipalities could pick up that difference. And there was a chart put out that if each municipality, by the percentage they pay in, paid the percentage of the offage, New Freedom would be a little over $7,000, they would pay. Now, I wanna make something clear to people, the way we do things now with PPU's, any money New Freedom spends, if they spend $7,000 extra for PPU's, you're buying more time. You're not paying Glen Rock's time. Glen Rock is only getting $298,000 worth of hours, that's all they're getting. And if anyone's been over in the office, every two weeks, we track all the time in each municipality on how much they get and how much they need and how much they're supposed to have. And I handed out some papers to the mayor that shows one of our monthly reports. What we do every year is we figure out how much time each municipality has paid for, how much they get. We divide that by 12 and we project every month how much time each municipality should get. Sometimes a little high, sometimes a little low, and we target that difference up and down on a scale. Now, what this would mean is with Glen Rock's money, they would have less target hours. So if New Freedom bought $7,000 worth into the pot, you're getting $7,000 more time, which equals out to about nine hours a month. It's just under $100, 100 hours a year. It's about nine hours a month, extra service, whether it's patrol, whether it's community service, whatever it might be. But I can assure you, and this is where I think some of the misunderstanding is, none of your money goes to any time for Glen Rock. They get what they pay for, you pay for what they get, so do you. You guys are gonna get steak and baked potatoes, they're getting a Happy Meal. They seem confident and happy not to have the full service that we offer. Now, someone would say, well, if their incidents say they should have a certain amount, how are they gonna get that amount? If you look at the annual incidents, those are not all calls for service, and I'm gonna distinguish calls for service. An incident is something we do, no matter how minor, how major. A call for service is a request from someone in that municipality for us to do something, whether it's a 911 call, a walk-in, a call to the station. If we're requested to do something, that's a call for service. About 70% of everyone's incidents are calls for service. The other 30% are self-generated incidents, meaning they're incidents that we create. We create those incidents by doing effective patrol tactics. We're going through town, we're running tag numbers, we're checking on things, we're taking drunks off the road. And if you're a proactive police department, that's what you're supposed to be doing. A reactive police department's like a fire company, you just sit around and go out when the call comes in. But effective police work is not only reactive, but proactive, okay? So there's 30% of those calls that we generate. Prime example, just this past Saturday night in Shrewsbury, 11:30 at night, one of my cars is driving through Shrewsbury, car passes him, no taillights. He turns around, goes after him, checks him out, homemade paper tag on the back, stops the car, long story short, walks up to it, smells marijuana. Two guys from Baltimore City, check him out, have 30 vials of crack cocaine, other drug paraphernalia, warrants, an illegal car, the whole works. Major drug arrest, okay? That is proactive activity. Nobody called 911. This was our guys out doing their job, checking things out, trying to make sure the community's safe, okay? So we believe that's a good thing for the community. I think New Freedom believes that's a good thing, so does Shrewsbury. Glen Rock thinks so too, but that's sort of the luxury that they're saying, well, we might not be able to afford all of that. So we'll afford enough money to have emergency calls, whatever calls you can handle for that amount of time, and for the rest of it, we're not gonna be able to give you that much time. So if New Freedom in Shrewsbury and Stewartstown kick in a little extra money, not to Glen Rock, but to the department to maintain our staffing, I can assure you that goes into that formula for our target time and you will get that service. You will get that time in patrol, whether it's court, whether it's community policing, visiting the old folks' house, whatever you want, that time goes to you. You're supporting or subsidizing the police department, not Glen Rock Borough. You're helping fund us at our staffing level to keep us active and keep us doing that, okay? And that's why I wanted to make clear, I know if I thought your money was going to pay for Glen Rock's time, I wouldn't be in favor of it. We've done this now, keeping track of the time for, oh, going on three years now. We have a board over in the station where every couple of weeks, the sergeants pull the time from each municipality. Mayor's seen it, if we show Glen Rock's a little high, New Freedom's a little low, Shrewsbury's a little high. When people are low, we take our time and say, okay, we're a little slow right now, there's not much going on, let's go do a speed detail in New Freedom. So we'll go set up a speed stuff and do a speed detail or, you know, other activity. There's many things we do, just like, we have two different tip lines. If people see suspicious activity around the house at 2:00 in the morning, cars coming and going at all hours, okay? And they call on our tip line and say, at this address, late at night, there's a lot of activity, looks like drug activity. I send the guy down, the sergeant sends the guy down at night in unmarked car with binoculars sitting locked down the street, watch the place, get tag numbers, maybe stop a car or two, initiate the arrest, maybe do a trash pole, get a search warrant, whatever. Those are proactive activities that we do. If you have the time for us to do them, we do them. If you don't pay for the time, those are things that maybe don't get done as much in that particular town. So I just want you to understand that this overage or underage that they're talking about, that time will not go to Glen Rock, it'll go to whoever decides to buy into that little bit of time for their municipality. I just wanted to explain that. If anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to ask.
To put it simply, Glen Rock's gonna have less than their 30% of proactive time next year.
Not less than their 30%.
But you're saying 30% of all the...
30% is stuff we generate, so if we back off and don't patrol as much, don't spend as much time there, then that's fine, they won't get that, you know, they won't get that much more, more, more...
What I'm saying is if, if they're not, if they're not putting the top amount in that we talked about before, it comes out of their, the 30%, not coming out of the 70% we just spent for...
Correct, yeah, they'll get emergency service, they'll get emergency service. They're just not gonna get the icing on the cake. We'll answer emergency calls, we'll do everything they need us to do, but we'll watch the time and, you know, if we have a little extra time in Glen Rock and they want us to do traffic on Church Street, we'll do it. If they're, if they've used up their time, we'll spend our time in your guys' towns, okay? But they'll always get emergency service, they'll always get, you know, our response. But basically, what we'll have to do is like state police do. State police triage their calls, if you know what triage means, okay? When we used to have Winterstown, when we first got Stewartstown, Stewartstown had a contract with Winterstown. And that contract expired, they reviewed our bargain and they said, well, North Hopewell was after them to get them to cover their town and they could do it, they said, for less money than us. But they only have a three-man department, they're not 24/7, and state police were gonna be on call for two-thirds of the time. When that happened, the lieutenant from the state police called me. First of all, he couldn't believe that they did it, he said, second of all, he says, well, now that means we're gonna have to spend more time in Winterstown. He said, can you send me a breakdown of the calls that you've handled in Winterstown? What's the call volume in Winterstown, so I know if I have to ask for manpower? So we went back and produced four years, and you've seen the reports we give, the monthly report, of the types of calls for service we have. I sent him four years were the calls. About two weeks later, the lieutenant called me back and I said, hey, how'd it work out? He goes, well, it's not gonna affect our manpower that much, 'cause he said, I looked over your calls and he said, we do not do 85% of what you do. Meaning of all those calls, they only handle 15% of those, the rest I'm dealing bother with. That's what he's telling me, okay? So you can triage, okay? It wouldn't be that severe with Glen Rock, but if it gets down to the point their time is running low, some of the little stuff like abandoned vehicles, stuff like that, they just, they have to wait or find other means, but their emergency calls will always get handled. So whatever you guys decide to do, I just wanna make sure that that was clarified to everybody, so you understood where we come from. And as the manager, I give you my word, I won't spend your money and your time in Glen Rock. New Freedom will get all of it. And that's my, that's the part I can control, is where the time goes. If by some reason, which I don't think it would happen, we've never gotten that close before, if for some reason they would run out of time, then they could have state police or if they felt the need, anyone who's bought more time, they could buy it back from them. If they wanted more time, they could buy some from Shrewsbury, New Freedom, if you had some left to, but I don't think it would come to that.
I'd like a, I have a question, I think. If somebody calls into your tip line and they're in Glen Rock and there's activity at the house and people going in and out, you're not gonna not go. I know you, I love you, I'm not, not picking on you, but you're not gonna not go. You're gonna go and you're gonna sit outside that house and that's gonna be a Glen Rock activity and they're gonna burn up hours. The second thing is, if you're on patrol or you're just driving through Glen Rock and you see someone with their lights out and you stop them and they have crack cocaine and it smells like marijuana, that's gonna create an incident, it's gonna probably take off quite a bit of Glen Rock's hours. I, the mayor and I were talking earlier and he sent me a text. And if this is true, this would be really nice, I just can't imagine it isn't, but, you know, it's a longer text, but the bottom line said, if Glen Rock runs out of PPU's before the end of the year, they'll have to finish with Pennsylvania State Police.
That could be.
Is that a true statement?
That could be. If they run out of time, and that could be something that you could put in the IGA, whatever, but, you know, if they run out of time and they don't have, if they don't make some sort of arrangements with us either to buy more hours for somebody else or if they don't have the time, let's just say in November they run out, they could call state police and say, hey, we're out of time in Southern Regional, can you cover us for a month until January 1st comes around? They could do that. We had to deal with Winterstown that they said, they were only buying 40 hours a month. They said, hey, we're buying 40 hours a month. What happens if we have another major school incident like they had at North Hopewell Elementary many years ago, the guy with the machete? Or what if we have a homicide? We can't afford that. All that has to happen there, since they're, they're just a customer, okay? And whatever, they could, their mayor could call state police and say, will you come in and handle this major incident because we can't afford to pay Southern Regional? And they're obligated to do it.
I kinda, I kinda tend to look at this like, you know, we have four municipalities in, in the Police Commission and we have a pie, basically, I mean, and we're dividing up this pie and we're paying for it. If we, what we're effectively doing is, is taking and allowing Glen Rock, and I wasn't gonna get into personalities, but we're allowing Glen Rock to take a six and a half percent reduction in the portion of the pie they're paying for. If we're going to run it as a police commission, either Glen Rock needs to drop out and buy services or they need to pay for their part of the pie. I mean, I don't think you could have a, a different way. I, you know, either they're part of the group or they're not part of the group.
I'm 100% in agreement, either Glen Rock has to decide if they wanna be a member of the Police Commission or not. And I think they oughta be paying for their minimum 8.19, whatever, PPU's, like, everybody else is paying for the minimum.
Those are numbers you recommend.
To still get up the difference, what if we don't need the additional police time, but we're gonna get it anyways because, I mean, New Freedom isn't necessarily crime ridden. And I think everybody knows and will agree that Glen Rock probably needs the police more than the other three municipalities in the Police Commission, but I think Andy's spot on that they're either a member of the commission and they're gonna pay their fair share, or they're not a member and they're gonna do something else. Whatever the something else is, they'll have to decide.
What I was gonna recommend tonight was that we approve our contracted IGA portion of the budget, which I believe is 589? I think that's right. 589, 559, is that it? Yeah, that would be it. And I think, I think we should give Glen Rock, yeah, that's not it. That's if we take, pick up the 20K of SLA. Yeah, there's a lot of numbers, let's see. Yeah, it's 589.6, basically. So what I would recommend is we approve the 589.6, which is what we are obligated for under the IGA and what you asked us to pay for. And I, and I think we can approve that tonight. And we gotta keep in mind, the budget is frozen now for 30 days. We're approving it because we don't want you guys to start January 1st without a budget. So we're approving it even though the budget's frozen. So we approve the 589 tonight and we let Glen Rock have the opportunity to step up and say, yes, we're going to pay. Because I think, I can't remember who I was talking to earlier, but basically the Police Commission has taken a silver platter and they've, they've polished it up and they've handed Glen Rock $24,000 on a silver platter in the, in healthcare rebates that the Police Commission is giving them. So all that they have to do is turn around and say, okay, we're gonna give that back to the chief to use in the budget. Now, I think I was talking to you about that. So, so you've given them an opportunity to be a full member of the Police Commission because you've given them that rebate. You're also giving us a rebate in Shrewsbury, a rebate, and Stewartstown a rebate, but they have the opportunity, without increasing taxes or doing anything to their budget, they can just hand you that money back. If I had it in my power, I'd make a contract and they would have to sign it, but we can't do that.
I have to say, I agree with you, okay? I just wanted to let you folks know our, our standpoint on it, that we can make it work, I'm willing to try to make it work. You guys decide what you wanna do, I just wanted to make sure everyone understood where it was coming from and why it was done the way it was done, okay?
Yeah.
I, well, I'll do whatever you folks want, you guys make your decision. I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood the different, why there was two different PPU numbers and how that came about. So you guys make your own decision, I just wanted to make sure it was informed as decisions to what you wanted to do.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
I think we need a plan, a plan B in the event that Glen Rock says, we're gonna use $20,000 to pay for trees because Victoria had made that comment before about, well, what they'd use the police money for if you were to case Glen Rock.
See, at that point then, I really honestly think, and I'm, I'm not a litigious person, but I think at that point, the Police Commission needs to make a decision, do we want to force them to pay for what they are supposed to in the contract or do we want to try to do something different? There, there are other ways to do this too. I mean, you know, the police department could give up a car. I mean, you could find places in the budget to cut 20-some K. I, I don't wanna do that to you, but there are ways that you can, that you can do that to make it, to make it work. But I don't, I mean, you have to realize too, if we all, if every municipality took a 6.45% cut in the budget, you'd have a $121,000 hole in your budget. So we don't have the luxury of saying, I don't wanna pay what you want us to buy, we, we're just gonna give you this. And that's what Glen Rock is doing to you. They're, they're telling you, we're only gonna give you this, make it work, and you shouldn't have to do that. That's not your job. And you do a great job at it, but you shouldn't have to do that.
So let me ask you a question about your proposal of, I would like us to approve our $589,000. In accordance with the IGA... In accordance with the IGA, it's your obligation to approve a budget. Not just your funding, but a budget. Has a budget been presented to New Freedom Borough that reflects a New Freedom contribution of $589,000?
Yes, provided Glen Rock pays their $318,000.
Okay, so that budget requires Glen Rock to pay that additional amount. So the one you would be approving would be doing that?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure, we're really approving a budget, not just our funding.
Right, you're right, yes. We are approving the budget, and that's been presented in excruciating detail, but yes, we have that. And our total on that is 589.748, I believe, is the actual number. No, I'm sorry, that is not the actual number.
Every paper I look at, it's different.
I know. If you look at Fox, you've got 47.
589, 559?
Yeah, that's the number. That's 31.15% of the department's budget. And that's what Chief has recommended our PPU's for 2021. And according to the IGA, he has that right, and that is basically the way he does. He tells each community and municipality how many PPU's you need for us to cover you. And now Glen Rock's coming back and saying, no, you're not going to tell us how many we need, we're going to tell you how many we want, which gives us a $20,000 shortfall. Now, I wish there was a way, and I'll say again to the solicitor, so that we have this on record, there is no legal way that we could go to Glen Rock and say, will you give your $20,000 rebate back to the municipalities if they pay in your stead?
When you say back to the municipalities?
If we would go ahead and go with the higher rate, and make up, if Shrewsbury, New Freedom, and Stewartstown would make up the $20,000 shortfall, and once we get the rebate, which is anticipated to be that amount, 20,469,
Right.
we can't force Shrewsbury to give us that $20,000 from the rebate money.
So the department provides or distributes back to the communities that rebate?
Correct.
Okay, so if I'm Glen Rock, and you're saying, okay, here's $20,000, but we just want you to give it back, they basically paid for that time. Why should they pay that? So therefore, they would be supplementing you?
Because they've already paid that. They're part of, if you want to look at it that way, the health insurance now that they get this being a rebate.
I think what you're saying is...
It was a savings account, basically.
Yeah, but what you're saying is, we're distributing our health savings account money. And we want you to use your distribution to fund the additional $20,000 that's being attributed to you that you're objecting to. So they would still get those hours associated with it, but what you're asking them to do is agree to utilize that money to actually pay for that additional time.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's 2021 hours.
Is there a way that we could legally?
It's 2021 hours, it's not hours they've already paid for. It's just their healthcare rebate.
Correct, but you're asking them to fund their 2021 budget contribution with that distribution.
Yes.
Yeah. So you're basically saying, we just want you to use that in order to pay for it.
But can we legally draw up an agreement to do that?
If they approve their budget that has that number in it, they're obligated to pay that amount. And they need to come up with the money, be it through the healthcare distribution or whatever. So which you're telling them is, hey, if you approve this budget, we'll make that distribution. If you don't approve the budget, we're not giving you that money.
Steve, can I ask a question? In looking down the road, okay, not just where we're stepping, but down the road, as a way maybe to alleviate this, and this is just an off-the-wall question, if in the IGA, every municipality decided to earmark that rebate money to a fund that would then be paid percentage equal to fill in spaces like this, if everyone was chipping into it when they needed that for a shortfall, could everyone just donate to that account and use that to help alleviate that?
You could come up with some budget proposal that does that, but it's a show game, in a sense. Either you get the money, or you also have the insurance, it's all a show.
I mean, we paid into it, too. So, you know, if we get a health insurance rebate from the police officer's health insurance, because it was overestimated beginning of the year, so there's money that comes back, we should be able to decide how we want to spend it, too. Maybe we'll put it towards our part of the police budget, maybe we'll plant some trees with it, but, you know, we're saying, we're going to pay, we're paying that number on here, the 589, 559. Glen Rock's number, if you look right underneath that, is 318,532. And they're saying, well, we're not going to pay that, we're going to pay 298,063, and we'll see what happens with the $20,000. We're not going to make any, as far as I know, Glen Rock hasn't made any commitments. You've got $20,000 to fill that hole in their budget to get them to 318 for the 298.
No, no, it's a show game. They're keeping us hostage.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
I'm sorry. I think it's a show game. I think they're keeping us hostage, really, with this situation. I mean, I think we should stick to our guns and be a little firm with it, and I'm just not in favor of doing that.
And this is something that happens with Glen Rock almost every...
It goes on and on and on and on.
I honestly think we should give them the opportunity to step up and pay the 318.
Prove that they're sincere, that they want to be a part of all this, and be sincere about it.
I mean, because they may step up and do it. So let's give them that opportunity, you know?
That's how I feel, 100%.
I know New Freedom and Shrewsbury has subsidized Glen Rock for quite a number of years. When the police department first started, Glen Rock didn't have a buy-in. But New Freedom and Shrewsbury, I believe, Tanya, correct me, we paid 5% for how many years?
You paid for five years, and then for two years, you paid 2%. So you had a total of seven years that you subsidized them.
So you're talking about Shrewsbury and New Freedom has already subsidized Glen Rock about $100,000.
We're not talking about the people right here that have subsidized Glen Rock, we're talking about all the residents of the borough.
Yes, that's what we're forgetting, yes.
Absolutely. So I think it's fair to approve our portion of the budget, because we don't want to go into January with not having a budget. So I think, are we the first ones meeting?
No.
Shrewsbury Councilor, I was at their meeting last week, they approved their portion as 638,200, and did not do any of the makeup dollars to increase their 2021 costs. Okay, well, then I think we're on the right track, and I think if Glen Rock gets together and approves the 318.5, you've got a complete budget. Otherwise, you know, they've got the 30-day freeze, and then the police commission's going to have to get back together and decide what they want to do.
Well, the 638, was that the same budget that we approved at the 589?
Yes, it's the same number. They approved that, is there PPU's?
So if Stewartstown approves their 346 version of it, it's my read of the IGA that you have a budget that's been approved by 75% of the participating municipalities, and that means we're probably going to approve the budget.
I think Stewartstown already met, too, they first one did it.
Say that again, please.
I think Stewartstown already met, I think they first one.
We think Stewartstown already met, but I don't think they've met since the police commission meeting, though, right? I don't think that.
I don't know whether you did, I can't swear to it. If I could just clarify something...
Stewartstown meets the first Monday of the month. So their next meeting is January 4th.
I just want to clarify something. I don't disagree with you guys, I'm not taking Glen Rock's side. I'll be honest with you, my main concern is holding this police department together. I don't want to delay my guys off, you know, and see us lose officers, and lose patrol coverage for all the other municipalities. That's why I'm just trying to see if we can find a way to make it work. So that's, you know, I agree with you 100%, I know where you're coming from, but I'm just trying to hold this together because I got good people, I don't want to delay anybody off.
Yeah, and I don't think you're going to have to do that, but I think we need to get to a point where we have a commitment from Glen Rock to pay their portion, which is 318.5, or they need to figure out what else they want to do. But, I mean, if they want to get to November 12th and figure out they have no police coverage, if that's, if you're willing to hold their feet to the fire and to do that, then that makes it easier for us to approve what we need to approve. So I think for tonight, I would like somebody to make a motion that we approve the 589,559, which is New Freedom Borough's IGA portion of the police commission budget of $1.892 million.
I'll make that motion with a caveat that we, and maybe this isn't going to be acceptable, but I make that motion with a caveat that we don't purchase any additional PPU's to close that hole to get us above our minimum, especially if we don't need it. We're asking our taxpayers to pay for something they don't need. I mean, you know, especially this year, well, years going into next year, so I don't know if that's acceptable in terms of a motion or not, because it adds another condition on, it's not just straightforward.
I'll second that motion.
But I think maybe they'll send a message to Glen Rock, hey, you know what? We really do have to get serious. I mean, they're being handed $20,000 bucks, it's sort of like, to me, it's a no-brainer. Well, let's put it towards the police budget, so that fills the gap, and it shows that we're really serious about continuing to be a member of Southern Regional Police, you know? Who knows what Glen Rock will do, though? I wouldn't even want to speculate.
Yeah, I think that's an acceptable motion, because we can always come back and say, what else can we do? But I was serious, I mean, we, there's other things in the budget that you can look at. You're not going to have to lay off an officer for $20,000. We'll figure something out.
And furthermore, what the IGA approved, provides, is if there are not 75% of the municipalities that have approved the budget, you maintain the 2020 budget going into 2021 until a budget is approved. So I would assume that if there's no budget approved by 75% of the municipalities, you're going to continue to meet with the municipalities to come up with a solution that is acceptable to everyone, including Glen Rock, New Freedom, Shrewsbury, Stewartstown. So it's not like, oh, Earth's going to just fall apart on January 1, and we have to start laying off officers, and people are not going to be getting police service.
And once the budget is frozen for the 30-day period, you can have a majority, a 75% majority approve the budget. And then at that point, Glen Rock really needs to pay the 317.5, or decide what they want to do with their position on the police commission. That would be, and then we have to all get back together and talk. So I think we give Glen Rock the opportunity to do what I consider the right thing, and buy in for what you recommended for them to buy in for PPU's.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, you know, to me, if it's Glen Rock, it's sort of a no-brainer. You know, you're being handed $20,000. You're not out of pocket necessarily, because money's already been spent, essentially, you know, be your part from last, from this year, into the health insurance, instead of getting money back, you're going to fill that hole and show that you're serious about continuing to be a member of Southern Regional. I don't know about, or what else you say. The tireless and the Glen Rock, you ever hear the same kind of police, anything?
So we have a motion to approve the 589,559, and to not purchase additional PPU's to cover any holes in the budget. And, you know, I mean, I think we have to add the caveat that, you know, depending on, I mean, there is a possibility that Glen Rock's going to say that they don't want to be part of the police commission, and then we'd have to... So I think everything's always up...
Well, that's a different ballgame, that is.
Right, that is a different ballgame. So I think it really is incumbent on the police commission to tell Glen Rock, they're approving the budget, and that they need to pay the 318. But that, again, that has to go through the police commission. What we can do here is approve the 589,559.
And that is the correct number, am I right, Chief? Every time I look at a paper, it's a different...
I want to make sure before the council roots on this, that we're, it's on your big
I have 597,180.
560?
No, that's patching Glen Rock.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was 589.70?
589,559.
Is that what it is?
Yes. Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table. Any other discussion? Anything from anybody out there? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? My vote is aye.
Okay, thank you.
I have a, about, I don't know, two months ago, I guess, I presented a, something with the rec board. I don't want to vote on it tonight, I just want to pass it out. And Brian's not here tonight, he's sick, so I don't want to vote on it without him being here. And so if we could just pass it down, I guess, I think I have my coffee. All right, and then there was one other item. Were you trying to do the consent agenda? Yeah, that'll be next. I do want to point out that due to COVID, a lot of municipalities are in trouble. Tanya has managed to find grant money, and also has kept our, the earned income tax has been flowing in. So New Freedom Borough is very strong going into 2021, and it's very commendable.
And I think, this isn't, I should say this because she's going to retire, but I mean, this isn't something, this is exceptional this year, it's something she does every year. It's always, it's every year, it's the same thing, she's pinching pennies, and, so, yeah, I mean, going forward, we're in pretty good fiscal shape.
Any questions on the consent agenda in the minutes from last month?
I think a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
A motion to approve in a second. Does anyone have any questions on anything in the agenda? Okay, a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're going to have a short executive session regarding some legal issues. All right, we're back, and I did want to mention, too, that during that executive session, a personnel issue came up, and we did discuss that as well. a personnel issue came up and we did discuss that as well. The next item we have is the public comment, and Mr. James Riffen is going to be speaking on that. I do want to, I do want to remind you that it's a five-minute timeframe.
Just flip it straight up, Mr. Riffen.
Is it on?
Yes.
No, I guess.
My name is James Riffen. I have a prepared statement, which I would like to read into the record. I also have a copy for the official record, and I have a copy for each individual in the room. If someone will come over here and accept these, I'll give it to them, and you can distribute it among yourselves. Here's a copy. One each to everyone. Wait a minute, wait a minute. One each of that one also. Thank you.
This part is five minutes.
As I said, my name is James Riffen. I am the current owner of the former Lamont property at 1 East Franklin Street. I ask that you consider rescinding, repealing Resolution 2018-2. Resolution 2018-2 was adopted by the previous council on October 15, 2018. The purpose of Resolution 2018-2 was to ratify and approve the 2010 conveyance of two parcels associated with the Lamont property from Larry Lamont to Franklin Land Investments. The principles of Franklin Land Investments are the same as the principles of Franklin Center Incorporated. Franklin Center Inc., in concert with Burgantine Builders presently, are developing the property adjacent to the former Lamont building. I argue that Resolution 2018-2 is legally infirm. The purpose of Resolution 2018-2 was misstated when it was introduced at the October 15, 2018 council meeting. Section 3301.1b4, subsections 2 and 4 of subchapter 8, chapter 33, title 8 of the revised Pennsylvania statutes mandates of legislative acts which have the purpose of regulating land use, development, and subdivision, and that regulate the conduct of a person or entity within a borough must be by ordinance, not by resolution. Resolution 2018-2 is a legislative act which has the purpose of regulating land use, development, and subdivision. Resolution 2018-2 is a legislative act which has the purpose of regulating the conduct of a person or entity within the borough. Given the purposes of Resolution 2018-2, those purposes can only be achieved by an ordinance, not by a resolution. There are multiple things that must be done to adopt a resolution than to adopt an ordinance. A public notice must be published in a local newspaper. A copy of the ordinance must be filed in the county log library. A copy of the ordinance must be presented to the borough's mayor for the mayor's signature. None of these procedures were followed in adopting Resolution 2018-2. On November 23, 2020, I deposited in the utility slot of the borough's administration building, this building, seven envelopes. Each envelope was addressed to a particular council member. Each envelope contained a two-page letter wherein I asked that the council rescind Resolution 2018-2. Each envelope also contained a proposed complaint, which, if filed, would ask the York County Court of Common Pleas to invalidate Resolution 2018-2. The proposed complaint gives very detailed arguments as to why I believe that the resolution is legally infirm. I would suggest that you publish a public notice which gives notice to the borough's residents and property owners that the council is considering rescinding Resolution 2018-2. I would suggest that at the council meeting following publication of the public notice, you invite borough residents and property owners to provide you with input regarding my request to rescind Resolution 2018-2. I would further suggest that you give borough residents and property owners at least 30 days to provide their input. I have prepared a proposed ordinance which would rescind Resolution 2018-2. I have prepared a proposed public notice. In the material that I just handed to council, I have included a copy of the proposed ordinance and the proposed public notice. Thank you for your time and your attention.
All right, the, is there any other public comment on agenda items? Okay. First report is Mr. Mayor.
I think we've covered a lot of what I had to, to discuss and had to do with the police commission and Glenn Rock and the passage of the current budget for police. I really don't have anything else.
Okay. And, senior center?
The only thing that the senior center was curious about, I've already told them that it would be well past the first of the year that we reopen the community center, but they were just wondering whether or not, you know, whether we were going to vote on it this time or not, and if we could give them any, I mean, I.
Yeah. I mean, we're sitting in different rooms.
Right, right. I mean, it's hardly likely that we're going to open by January 1st or even February 1st. But, so I'll just tell them that we.
I'm really hopeful for February 1st.
Okay. Depending on.
Obviously, yeah. You can't really do anything about it.
That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor.
I think everyone did receive a copy of a proposed ordinance which would adopt the property maintenance code in the borough. Basically looking for direction from Borough Council if they desire to have it advertised for consideration at your January meeting, whether you want to look at the property maintenance code materials before the January meeting and authorize for advertisement.
We just got it today.
Yeah.
They probably didn't have time.
Yeah, so, you know, as, as typical, you have the International Code Agency that prepares various codes. Property Maintenance Code's one, there's an Electrical Code, there's a Plumbing Code, there's all kinds of codes. And so in this case, you'd be adopting the property maintenance code, which basically provides general property maintenance within a property in the exterior of the property. So it deals with, you know, the mowing of the grass, the cleaning up of trash and debris, the making sure that the, the structure is basically sound and things like that. So it's a tool utilized by many municipalities to deal with a lot of common maintenance issues throughout the municipality. So what you may want to do is just sort of look through the provisions and, you know, figure out whether this is something that you want to pursue. You know, right now I have a municipality in which we are sending a number of enforcement notices, and it's a bunch of trash and debris that's outside. He's a hoarder. And there's, you know, there's videos of rats being, running around the exterior of the property as a result. And as typically with, with orders, they can't recognize that this is an issue, and will most likely have to go to the Court of Common Pleas to enforce those provisions of the code. But, you know, that's a tool that we found helpful in dealing with those types of situations.
Any, Steve, is it, I want to put my words correctly. I guess, is it general enough to address a recent issue we've had with motor vehicles?
I think it can be used as a tool, you know, but once again, it gets down to, hey, if you have a licensed vehicle that's parked on the road and it's structurally sound, it's structurally sound.
But that's on the road, isn't it? And also, when you have these vehicles, you were talking about Washington Avenue, they're loaded down with, with wrappers and, you know, junk stuff. So it's, it's a hoarding. It's a type of hoarding. So that should be able to be used.
Okay, once again, you know, you have to show that it's an issue, you know, so.
It's an issue because the neighbors are complaining, and they have been complaining, and nothing's been done.
And what I'd ask you to do is take a look at it over the next month and see if you think that's something that we should advertise for consideration in January.
I'm going to be a little stupid right now and ask you a question. If we already have ordinances that pertain to this, why can't we enforce them currently?
Okay. And, and I mean, we sat down in meetings and gone through those ordinances, and I think you and I disagree in the interpretation of certain provisions and whether it is the silver bullet that some people think, or others can be interpreted. I don't think we have solid ordinances that allow us to deal with those situations.
I just want everybody else to be aware that we're, we're looking at the E-code, and it says one thing, and we're saying, well, we can't enforce that because we haven't done and adopted this. So.
Yeah, and, and it's not, that's not a silver bullet for a situation. But if you look at the situation at hand, we have a driveway that's been approved previously by Borough Council for the parking of vehicles. And therefore, just because he's parking vehicles on the side of the, of his house in and of itself doesn't make it illegal when in fact we approved it years ago.
But he's parking, he doesn't, isn't parking on, 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 even the street or his driveway?
He's parking in the yard.
He's parking in the front of, of the yard. The cars are sitting in the front of the yard. And I know what that's like because right now I have a situation, I live across somebody like that, that is hoarding and has cars, and what that looks like.
What, what he's saying though, Inga, is that the, the property maintenance code addresses those issues, and it'll give us a little bit more strength in, in addressing the issues.
It'll be my entertainment tonight.
There you go. Tell them, man, it's an existing situation. If we passed it later?
It would help. You know, you, you, you're not going to have it look like Von Air Country Car. It just, that's the reality of the situation.
But there's nothing currently that we can do about it, is what you're saying.
I think there's a lot of issues with respect to the codes we have in place and their enforceability. That's it.
Okay. Is anyone, is anyone out there from Rec Council?
They, they did not meet this past November meeting, and I don't think they're meeting till after the first of the year.
Well, yeah, the intent was to have them here in case something of a rec nature came up, like the thing I just passed out as an example. But that's okay. Committees, miss anybody? Anybody else have anything?
We can, we can hit IGA. Mike Sharkey, who's the chairman of the IGA, decided to forego his previous, he was here, made a presentation. We are not going to go forward with the incident interpretation of IGA. We're going to stay with the PPU right now. We need to redevelop some verbiage within that IG, new IGA, and we're still planning on doing that. We meet every other Tuesday. I would encourage anybody from council to please be there and add comment to what you're, what you're thinking with, with, in terms of the IGA, what it should or possibly should not contain.
Are all the municipalities represented at the IGA meeting there?
Uh, yes, yes.
Glenn Rock is there now?
Yes, Glenn Rock is there. Stewartstown is there. I am there. Mike Sharkey is there from Shrewsbury. So yes, we are all involved. But unfortunately, we put an awful lot of work into trying to redevelop going forward from a PPU system to a, what do we call it? Incident, incidents over a three-year period, averaging them out, and that determines what your profit percentage is. But right now, that's.
I, I would, I mean, I'm, I'm not going to obviously sit in on the, but I, and I've talked to Mike about it already, but obviously, one of the things that has to happen, if there's, first of all, you're going to have to get all four municipalities to agree to a new IGA, obviously. But the, the second item is the pie we're talking about. I mean, there has to be something that says you're a part of a police commission, it's a viable police department that is currently up and running and has minimum staffing requirements. So therefore, when you come up with your incidents, you have to have carve out 100% of the pie so that the police department is properly supported.
If anybody here wishes to see the current IGA, let me know. I will have the office staff here make you a copy of that.
It's available, soft copy, so you can.
Now, when, when do you meet?
We meet tomorrow night. It's every other, let me, Face ID won't work with me as of. Because one Tuesday, tomorrow, we meet here at 6 o'clock. It's every other Tuesday.
It's every other Tuesday.
And on the 5th, we meet at Shrewsbury at 7:00. New Freedom is always at 6:00, Shrewsbury is at 7:00. And it's twice a month.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. You're more than, more than welcome to attend. We have a few people that do attend from the community, of course. Even Erica has been in every meeting for the last two and a half years, I think. So I thank her for that, keeping us all straight. She has a lot of input. It's very important to hear from the, from the community. And community is also invited. I would, since we're recording this, I would, you know, invite anyone from municipalities to please, please feel free to attend. Unfortunately, only 10 right now. But it's important for all of you, council and municipality residents, to, to be involved in this. That's all I have for the idea. All right. Is there anybody else?
And anything? Okay, then under new business, we have the Comcast franchise renewal agreement. We are currently paid the maximum for the Comcast franchise.
5%.
5%, right. 5%, right.
As of year-to-date, as of the end of May, we're probably 110,000. So we'll probably be 110,000 for next year.
Yeah, so we anticipate 110,000 for next year and as Berchantine continues to expand and complete their project, we're seeing more benefits from that too. And I just got a notice that the Xfinity is revising their payment plans. I don't know what that means, but I'm sure it's going to go up.
Do you need a motion?
Um, yeah, that'd be good, I'm half signed here, so I guess we might do that first.
So I make a motion, a motion that we embrace or endorse or accept.
Approve.
Approve of Comcast. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on that?
Can I get free cable if we?
I don't think so.
If you recall, this was good actually with you.
It's a joke, it's a joke.
Just the borough office, Jeff, come down here, use the borough's TV.
They gave it to the water department, the sewer department, they cannot give it to anyone.
Oh, right, right, okay. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. The next item is the, well, we actually already covered the SRPD budget, didn't we, in detail? Finally, we have a public comment on non-agenda items. Okay, we, having a public comment, I would entertain a motion for adjournment unless somebody has something else.
So move.
I have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? My vote is aye.
See you around.
Thanks for that.
All right, bye-bye. Happy holidays.
Thank you, same deal.
All right.
Yeah, let me turn this off.